Thank you everyone for their attendance tonight. I do have the formality of reading the letter if I may. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code, Section 2-21 and by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of Virginia Beach City Council Tuesday, May 10, 2016, 6:00 PM, City Council Chamber, Building Number 1, 2401, Courthouse Drive. The purpose of the special formal session is for City Councils to consider and take action reference Southeastern Public Service Authority Use and Support Agreement and Item Number 2, Fiscal Year 2016/2017 Resource Management Plan, Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Plan, A, Mayor and Vice Mayor Proposal, B, Councilman Moss's Proposal. All that being said, I would ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
Counsel, I am going to move to the budget first and instead of, we'll get to Item Number 2 first if you don't mind, the Mayor Sessoms and Vice Mayor Jones' reconciled proposal. Do we have speakers?
Yes, Your Honor. No, we have no speakers on this, only on the other.
Okay.
Well, please.
Well, she's only speaking, so I have to make-
She's speaking on yours.
Right, that's what I'm asking about, because I think I'm going to make a substitute. We usually move to a council discussion, so I think the public hearing should be on either one to keep us from having-
I think you're right on the money. So, call the speakers, please.
Diana Howard.
That's what I thought I said.
I thought too, but-
We're glad to have you here tonight.
Well, thank you. I'm here to support John Moss's alternative budget for the revenue-neutral real estate tax, because Beach families need a break as well. It seems that every year we get our taxes or fees raised just a little bit every year, if it's not a stormwater fee, or sewer fee, or trash fee, or a property tax fee, it's raising the real estate tax. And when they raised it, it was like, "Well, property values haven't gone up, so most of you aren't going to feel it." And now that property values are going up, doesn't, our mortgages are going to go up because the property values have gone up, but it's not going to be lowered in the regular tax, but it will in the regular budget, but it will in John Moss's budget. So that's why I'm supporting it, because families that are on fixed incomes, a dollar sixty-four a month in the waste management fee will hurt them, and increase in their property taxes will hurt them. Remember when we had the raise in our car taxes, right? This is all the stuff that 30 cents on the car tax supported. None of this says roads. All of this is body cameras, firefighting equipment, et cetera. I know you all say user pays when it came to this trash tax, the sewage tax, and the stormwater tax, but I would have thought if you're going to raise property tax on cars, it would go to roads, right? Then there's these fees and taxes on libraries and rec centers. These hurt the people that need these things the most, the lower-income people. So that's why I would support John Moss's budget.
And we thank you for coming down tonight. Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under Ordinances and Resolutions, Item 2, which is Ordinance and Resolutions, Ray, the Fiscal Year 2016/2017 Resource Management Plan Budget. Do you want me to read it all?
Does it have to be read in detail, Mr. Attorney?
As long as everybody is clear on what is being voted upon, it does not have to be fully read.
Very good.
But if any member requests that it all be read, then that would be necessary.
I don't see one question that-
So everything under 2A and under 2B, is that correct?
It's everything under 2A, 2B-
2B.
And C?
And-
No, that's John.
No.
No C.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Moss.
I have a substitute motion, but it would be also to include C. So it would be 2A, 2B, and 2C. And with it, I'd like to discuss why. That would be appropriate, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. You know, one of the things, and I'm not going to reread the letter that I read at the informal session, because I do respect people's time, and in fact, I-
And really, and I thank you for that, really.
And I discourage people very much from coming down here tonight, because I didn't think that their energy would be productively expended, because I didn't think anyone was really very receptive to addressing, really, the financial plight of people who aren't getting a city pay raise and who aren't a special interest group, also benefiting from restoration of cuts. Let me say that I do support the reconciliation letter.
Thank you.
I do not support the underlying budget, came from the City Manager. I think it's important, often we tell our children how you spend your time and how you spend your money is really the explicit statement of your priorities. It's interesting to note that in all the discussion of the City Manager's executive summary, there wasn't any discussion, nor has there been in our budget discussions, any discussion of what is the financial health of the people that we work for? What is the financial health of those families, 50% of which have had a decline of 7.5% in the last nine years in their disposable income in real terms? We all know that the average household has had, what, stagnant wages for two decades? Now, I understand sometimes when times are tough, there's not much that we can do for people, and we've got a lot of bills to pay ourselves. But this is a year, apparently, where the cornucopia allows us to give a 3.34% raise at a time when retirees, social security people, VSRS people, have got 0% cost of living increases, because the government has said, "You know what? There's been no inflation. There's been no reduction in the purchasing power of your income." Now, you can believe that if you want, but that's exactly the official position of policy. We also know in the private sector, there has been real wage declines. And that's also demonstrated in our bond prospectus. When you could look at the average weekly wage declines in the private sector in the city, that's documented. So it seems strange to me that while we can employ and invest the intellectual capital to find the wherewithal to finance well-deserved raises, I mean, City employees are experiencing the very same hardship that every other person who's not a City employee is experiencing. And I think it's great that we found that money. But we only had to find $12 million, 12.1 if you want to round up, of money out of a $2 billion budget to deliver a real estate-neutral budget. Now, you know, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I identified how that could be done without undoing anything in the reconciliation letter, without undoing any of the pay raises or restorations of the manager's cuts. All it required is that the city to take a little more risk, and very little risk, I might add, and I'm going to make this one point to illustrate it, because 50% of all the savings, on any given day in the city's budget, there are about 3.5% to 4% of their positions are vacant, every single day, 24/7. That money is not paid out for the purpose for which it was appropriated. My proposal says, let's just take 2% of that, still leaving 1.5% to 2%, over-budgeting, given historical experience, and give that money back to the people who pay it. Makes sense to me. They're suffering, they're having hard times making ends meet. The retort is, "Oh, but we need that savings in case there's emergencies." But yet, we have a contingency built into the budget to start with over and above that. It is a standard practice in industry, and I've researched this out, even the school board does it, the City of Chesapeake does it, the City of Fairfax does it, they budget on a lapse rate, meaning they look at their historical vacancy rate, they take some portion below that, and they don't put money against something that they know there's going to be no historical expense, because you're tying up capital for no good reason. So I understand when the city says, "Well, but yes, but we use that stuff when emergencies come up." Well, I think in this environment, families have emergencies to come up. They have much less, if no, fiscal capacity to absorb additional financial stress, and yet we're saying, "Oh, sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we need to have a bigger savings account when you can barely make ends meet, and we can take no risk." I think in a budget where you can have everyone at the table, City employees, the vibe district, $4 million, certainly not the highest priority in my opinion, but nonetheless, I could even vote for that, if we weren't looking at the face of every working-day people and saying, "Sorry, we understand your suffering, but there's nothing we can do for you," when it's not true, Mr. Mayor, it's just not true. We just aren't willing to do what we have been forcing families to do over five successive budgets, is to reduce their personal standard of living to send more tax money to this City Council to spend. And most of us know that more people pay more money in taxes and fees to their local government than they pay income tax to the federal government, discounting social security, which is a payroll tax. But in terms of income tax, the City of Virginia Beach imposes more of a tax burden on its citizens than they pay in income tax. Now, I also argue, I think, Mr. Mayor, that we deliver more value than the federal government does to our local citizens, so I want to give a balanced approach. But that doesn't subtract away from the fact that in this budget, we had the capacity, but not the will, but not the will, to take out 6 tenths of 1% of a $2 billion budget to send a signal to people that, "Why, we can't fix all your financial hardship. We understand, and we care, and we're doing what we can do." This budget is an explicit statement of indifference, and I can think of no harsher word than indifference to the financial hardship that our citizens are experiencing, and we're asking them to pay more when it's not necessary.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Here in no second, that motion will fail. I will discuss-
Mayor Sessoms, can I ask one question of Mr. Moss?
Sure.
Mr. Moss, you referenced the City of Chesapeake in your dissertation. Does the City of Chesapeake have a AAA credit rating from all three credit rating bureaus?
No, not all three, but Fairfax County does.
Fairfax is the only one represented, had the AAA, the others did not.
Two, two of the bond ratings, I was saying, but all three. But the key is, let me make another point if I could. I'll never forget, since you asked the question. I think all of us acknowledge what Warren Buffett is, pretty smart guy, made a lot of money, I think we'd all acknowledge. And someone asked him why Berkshire Hathaway didn't have a AAA bond rating, which they do not, anyone who owns stock A or B would know that. And he says, "It's not worth the price I'd have to pay for it." And he says, "What do you mean?" He says, "I make more money on the money that I have. If I have to tie it up in reserves to get a AAA bond rating, it's a lower return on investment than is when I invest it myself." A business case analysis. Well, my point being is, it's more than just saying AAA, though I think you're-
Are you suggesting that this is a business?
I'm suggesting we should do a business analysis to know when the money we save can make us more money elsewhere than what we save on interest rates. You should always do that, and maybe it works for us, maybe it doesn't. My point is, it's like everything else in life, it's never cut and dry as to what the answer is. You have to look at the unique circumstances of Fairfax County, of Chesapeake. My only point was made is that you can't have a AAA bond rating and do lapse accounting. Chesapeake only has it from two, Fairfax County from all three.
And we have it from all three also, don't we?
That's right. But they do lapse accounting of payroll.
Okay, but I'm going to go ahead and call, please, Shannon.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I don't disagree with John in the sense that our families are not seeing raises, and things are tight. I am going to vote for the budget tonight, because I do believe a lot of good things have been accomplished in this budget, as Mr. Moss has alluded to. But as I travel the city, and in the emails that I get every week, day in and day out, if I get one a week, I get 10 a week, from citizens who are really struggling with their city services bill, or as they call it, the water bill. They don't know, they're not taking showers, they're not washing clothes as often, and they're not putting out trash, because they think it's going to help, and it's really not helping. And we really need to help those citizens find some relief with that city services bill. I know we're going on the, trying to go on the monthly bill versus every other month. You know, I agree, that will help in budgeting. My grandmother, she made $600 a month in social security. No matter how you slice it, she got $600 a month, and that was it. So if you give her a bill once a month for $100, or a bill every two months for $200, she's still only making that finite amount of money. So what I've done is I've asked the City Attorney's Office to draft a resolution to create a council-appointed ad hoc committee to identify resources and solutions for those folks who are struggling with paying their city services bill. And we're going to put this committee together, and we're going to look at options and try to come with a solution. I'm not, as the mayor likes to say sometimes, I'm not the smartest person in the room, but I know how to put smart people around me, and I'm sure if we put our heads together, we can figure it out. So I look forward to bringing that resolution in the coming weeks, but that is my proposal that I am going to put forward and hopefully get some support with that, and we'll find a solution to help those.
Very nice idea. Bobby D.
Yeah, thank you. You know, certainly, budget time is not the easiest time of the year for anybody. And, you know, and I really concur with Mr. Moss, there are a lot of struggling families out there, and I do home care, physical therapy, I am in many, many homes these days. Our Health and Human Services are getting 15,000 applications a month for some types of health, and we realize what's going on. But once again, I think one of the challenges we face is not going to be only this budget, it's going to be in the future budgets that I am truly concerned about. No budget is perfect. You know, I'm pretty upset that there's money for light rail on this. But by the same token, you know, I have made commitments, you know, to, you know, some of the public safety folks to address their salary and compression issues, which this does address. There's also a major road project in the Centerville District that my people really need to be successful as a strategic growth area, and to give them a quality of life they deserve. But once again, I say that no budget is perfect. But the thing is, you know, trying to solve a problem during budget cycle is indeed a difficult task. I think we've got to play chess, not checkers, we've got to look long-term. In speaking to members of the General Assembly and seeing what's going on the national stage, there's no doubt that localities are going to become more and more, disproportionate burden is going to be placed on localities going forward. And one of the things, you know, we're trying to do with our Process Improvement Task Force, which this council helped pass, is to create and stimulate and jump-start the small business community to bring more money into the coffers. It's pretty obvious that right now, we're at a tipping point where we really can't go to the well of the taxpayer anymore. Everybody is at that critical mass point. But the point is, if we can become a more user-friendly business and get small business going in this city, and other things we can do, I'm working on, right now, getting universities together to work as an economic development tool, but also help governments. What we have to do, my friends, is retool government, that, you know, we have to seek outside intellectual capital from universities and the business community to help us find better, more efficient ways to manage our budgets and lower the burden on the people as a long-term solution. And that's what I hope to bring forward. Thank you for allowing me to express myself.
Thank you, Bobby. Other questions or comments before I conclude? Counsel, you know, first of all, I want to say to John Moss, I respect your comments. Where the disagreement is, in my opinion, and we've talked about it before, I don't want to see that fund balance being reduced. And it gets back to what you argued, AAA versus not. And that, to me, is a priority to maintain the balance, so I say that. And then, the thing that I take great pride in, for, as I go across this city, are we providing our services, and are our services good services, and are they being provided at a fair price? And that's where I do believe that this city does do a very good job of providing excellent services at a very fair price. And I say that with the greatest respect to every City employee that works for us every day. That also being said, I want to thank the City Manager and the staff for getting us to this point. As Bobby just said, budgets are not the easiest thing to get done, and everyone always looks forward to the budget season. And the bottom line is, you know, it does take time. We have had a lot of public input, and the truth of the matter is, I really want to applaud our rookie City Manager and his staff for providing us with a good budget, and I do thank them for that. And as such, I'll call for the question.
I want to just correct one, because I think you mischaracterized my position. I never advocated that we change our AAA bond rating, and nothing in my proposal puts that in jeopardy, because the budget itself for payroll, if we're saying that we're over-budgeting payroll to protect our bond rating, which I don't believe you were saying, I don't think you were saying that.
Because you're saying, if you, and you even agreed last week, if you take some of those funds out, that will, at the end of the year, have an input on your fund balance.
That means, have an impact on your impact, doesn't mean it impacts your bond rating. That's two different statements. And you infer-
That's unknown.
No, no, because it is unknown, I agree with that. But then you're admitting that you are over-budgeting payroll to protect your bond rating, and I haven't heard anyone say that for the record, but if you're saying that tonight, that we are budgeting in excess of need for payroll to protect our bond rating, I'd like to have that on the record. I've never heard anyone say that.
I'm going to call for the questions since I started this one.
No, mine, no, I was pressing, it's no, I'm voting no.
I saw your nay up there, and I was stumbling.
I don't know what, I was like, what? May have bumped it with-
10 to 1.
Okay.
I wouldn't vote yes for that.
We're going to move on now to the ordinance to, Resolution to conditionally authorize and direct the City Manager to execute on behalf of the City of Virginia Beach, a Use and Support Agreement between the City and the Southeastern Public Service Authority, SIPSA. As you all know, Counsel, we were briefed on this last Tuesday. I did want to bring to your attention that there is a proposal from Wheeler-Brader that was delivered to Mr. Hanson and myself a few hours ago, at a price of $65, and can be negotiated downward. Dave wanted to make sure this was put out here to let you know that there are some backup plans, if SIPSA does not come around with us on Friday. Do you want to elaborate on my comments, sir?
I would just say that in front of you, you've got the updated, amended versions of the SIPSA Strategic Operating Plan and the SIPSA Use and Support Agreements, as far as that. You'll just mark on your front copy, for the SOP, the Strategic Operating Plan, we have amended pages 4, 15, and 16. They're highlighted in yellow, and they actually identify the specific commercial waste definition, the principal tenant, on page 4. And then, more importantly, on pages 15 and 16, we actually define, in their Strategic Operating Plan, the definition of how that disposal is conducted, where those transfer stations that currently provide that service specifically identify Landstown and the Oceanian Transfer Stations of Virginia Beach, also the Norfolk Transfer Station, which is critical to that large city as well. And then, on the Use and Support Agreement, which is the back document, we have only amended pages 4 and page 12, and those have been highlighted in yellow as well. Page 4 just gives a quick definition of commercial waste, and then, on page 12, you've got the, you've got the addition of paragraph C, which identifies the need, the requirement to receive and accept commercial waste at the applicable delivery point within the disposal system. And those, of course, in turn are, it's identified in accordance with the terms of the Strategic Operating Plan that I just defined. So what happens next, Counsel, is that the, with your approval of tonight's resolution, we, the staff, will wait and see what the special call session of SIPSA on Friday will be, and a determination by that board whether to accept the amendments to their Strategic Operating Plan and to accept the amendments to the Use and Support Agreement. That will require all members to revalidate their approval with their elected body, or however their board members wish to do that, the approval of the Use and Support Agreement. Our board members would move without the approval of their elected body. So this may take a little bit of time, and we would expect that the SIPSA board would ask for a delay with regards to that drop-dead date to get through that approval process.
Right. I do understand we have a speaker.
Yes, Your Honor. John Benedetto.
We welcome you tonight, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Sessoms, and members of City Council for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Michael Recycle Benedetto. And I reside in Blue Heron Court in Virginia Beach, have been a full-time resident of what many consider to be the greatest city on earth for about 30 years now. Our family owned and operated business, TFC Recycling, and we are the provider of various waste removal and recycling services to the City of Virginia Beach. We have been your partner in providing these services since the 1970s. The City of Virginia Beach is actually faced with a very difficult decision tonight on whether or not to sign that Use and Support Agreement to be a part of SIPSA for many years to come. I believe that the City Manager, Mr. Hanson, and the staff have done an excellent job at conveying to you both the pros and the cons of continuing that relationship. It's been said, some folks know the price of everything and the value of nothing, and I believe the decision is much more difficult, because SIPSA presented a price, but not the value. Let me explain. When it comes to waste management and the environment, there's a hierarchy, and in that hierarchy, it's like a pyramid. The top of the pyramid is to reduce the amount of trash you generate, and then reuse, and then recycle, and then waste to energy at the bottom, landfilling. SIPSA proposed an option to contract with Repower that is not as environmentally friendly as a waste-to-energy option. There are many that believe that Repower has a low probability of success, and if Repower fails, the backup plan is to landfill our residential trash for the next 15 years or more. Is it worth it, and would our citizens be willing to pay a few more dollars per month so that our waste would not wind up in a landfill? I would, and I believe that many of our residents would, too. And this trend is happening with countless companies, from the Apple Computers, to the Whole Foods, to the Busch Gardens, and many others, that are striving not to create a burden on future generations, but to generate zero landfill waste, and are paying more, in some cases significantly more, to do so. I believe that we live in the greatest city on earth, because we truly value long-term investments. We are leaders when it comes to investing in public safety, valuing our military, our police, our firefighters. We invest in education, because we value our children, our schools, and our teachers. When it comes to managing our waste, we are investing in our environment. We teach our children the value and the purpose of recycling, how it helps us become a more sustainable society, how it creates raw materials to make new products, how it reduces our carbon footprint and helps with rising sea levels. And we recognize that recycling creates jobs and generates tax revenue. Regardless of how Counsel votes tonight, I believe that there is a tremendous opportunity to do more in our great city.
We thank you so much for your comments. Thank you.
I'm going to do more if I've got-
Your time's up. I've got to be fair to everyone, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Jim Woods, you have a comment?
Well, it may be the same one that Rosemary has, so I defer her.
Oh, I was, first of all, I really appreciate our members who are sitting on SIPSA and the staff, and the work that's been done, especially John Barnes and Mr. Hanson. So Dave, you're saying if, let's say, SIPSA passes these amendments, they still have to go back to their member communities, it's going to take more time. So if that's the case, why can't we defer this?
They have to, they have to approve the rewrite of the Use and Support Agreement. Some of the, of the members that are there can approve, may have signature authority from their councils to approve, signing that Use and Support Agreement at that time. I would execute the agreement based on our council's will to support it as a result of this action tonight. They've provided that deadline to us. They are not willing to delay this any further. They have an agreement term sheet with Repower, so that Repower can move forward with their refinancing. They'll probably extend it to the, I would expect them to be able to extend it to the, to the May meeting, which is generally, I believe, the fourth week of the month, maybe it's the third week of the month, and that those councils would be asked to convene and review the new Use and Support Agreement with regards to the amendments that Virginia Beach has proposed. Beach has proposed. So the extension would be very short so that other councils could do exactly as we've been doing for two weeks. Remember, we're the one council that's, that's asking to, to SIPSA with an amended Use and Support, but they would all have to agree to it and change their vote for it.
So if they all have to go back and change their support, what would the harm be in deferring this?
May I?
Please try to answer it.
Mayor, I think the issue here is that we disagree basically with some of the tenants of the proposal that has come from SIPSA. And it's important that we, that SIPSA understands what our resolve is concerning commercial solid waste, and the fact that we can't leave that void out there as far as the collection and disposal of commercial solid waste in the city of Virginia Beach. SIPSA, once they understand what our resolve is, then they will have to make a decision as to whether or not they support the conditions that we have put forth, and hopefully they will, so that we can be a part of SIPSA. But if they don't, then we're left with the situation where half of our solid, half of our waste is not being addressed by SIPSA, and we end up having to go out and find another way to dispose of it. So it's important that we take a position, let them know where we stand, and give them the opportunity to make a decision to work with us. And that's what this is all about.
John, earn.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To that point, Louis, I would agree that with you and the balances, council, that is an important component of our support in terms of taking care of that, that waste stream so it doesn't end up in all of the vacant lots throughout the city and really deteriorate, you know, the beauty of our city. But if really the intent tonight is to clarify how important that is to this council, if memory serves me, it wasn't that long ago where we unanimously voted on a resolution that said that that was critical to our support. And I was prepared to support that coming in here tonight. But, you know, to Rosemary's point, if the other municipalities still have to go back to their councils and take a look at, I mean, this could come back, and they could look at it on Friday and say, well, we've got other changes that we want to make. So we don't even know that this is the final document that, that Mr. Hanson's going to be looking at to make. And so if the other municipalities have the opportunity to take a look at a final draft that has had the input of the other municipalities that are members of SIPSA, I certainly would like to have that opportunity to do it before I vote on it, rather than voting on it based on these changes. Because, I mean, there may not be, but I mean, there's a possibility we could see other changes that would be significant, and maybe we would not be supportive of.
I think this, John, that if we pass this tonight...
There are no more changes.
It's clear to them what our intention is. And if they have, if they have another solution to the issue or the problem, then they can bring it forth. But until we take some action to let them know what our position is, you know, they're going to assume that we're going to go along with whatever they, they vote to do. And I personally am not in favor of doing that.
Well, if I can just finish up along that...
Jim?
If I can just finish up along that thought, Mr. Mayor, is that, you know, if that's the case, and we are going to approve it, then I think that we need to approve it as is, and if there's any changes to documents other than the ones that have been highlighted here by the city manager, that whatever resolution we vote on tonight would then be nullified.
Well, let me say this to you. It's, I'm not going to speak for the vice mayor, but this is it, but it's been sent over to SIPSA as far as I'm concerned right now. And I believe this is the position of staff.
Yes, sir, it is.
I have, you know, we've got some wonderful people that are out there, perhaps, that will become partners with us if SIPSA does not respond positively to what we have here tonight to vote on. But I want to be clear that the staff has made it clear to me, they will not recommend any changes from what this last thing that's being voted on tonight. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jim.
If I can just, and just clarify from a legal perspective, Mr. Stiles, starting at line 47 of the resolution, it says that the city of Virginia Beach hereby authorizes and directs the city manager to execute on behalf of the city of Virginia Beach a Use and Support Agreement, amending the agreement, blah, blah, blah. So, so by, by passing this particular resolution, the way I understand it is, we are authorizing just this resolution the way it is currently. Is that correct? So if they come back to answer some other questions about this, the manager no longer has authority to, to execute it?
Where this stands, Virginia Beach staff has worked with staff for SIPSA to reach agreement on terms that would include the handling of commercial solid waste in SIPSA's plan. The agreed upon documents between the staffs are what is before you. Mr. Hanson has said to you that he is comfortable, and staff is comfortable with these, with this Use and Support Agreement, and with this standard operating plan, and that that would meet the requirements of what you are passing. And he has represented to you here in response to questions that if there were any changes to the documents that have been displayed to you, that he would not sign it without coming back to you. So that's a long way, I think, of just answering your question, the affirmative.
So yes?
Yes.
You didn't go to law school. Oh, you went to W N L, that's right.
Can I add one other thing, Mr. Mayor? Some other localities, as I understand it, have requested some changes relating to their transfer stations or other items unrelated to the issue of commercial solid waste. Those changes, I understand, are also being discussed on Friday. So there may be words that are in the final draft that are not in this document, but none that would affect the issue that council has addressed here, which is commercial solid waste.
Rosemary.
Well, I sent this last week. This has been going on for a very long time. And then all of a sudden, we're briefed last week, and now tonight, for the first time, something this important is put in front of us, which frankly, I haven't even had time to read it yet, I'm being expected to vote on it. And this is nothing against our staff and what you've done. I totally respect that. I just don't like being, having to make a decision that's probably going to have to be deferred by these other localities anyway. I just don't see why we have to do it tonight, and that's, that's just how I personally feel. I haven't had a chance to even read this.
Any other questions, comments? Over to John.
I do. Well, the, the thing with SIPSA, and I know we try to be cooperative regionally and so forth, and I appreciate all that the staff has done in trying to work through this with SIPSA, but I really see this as being a bare minimum. There are just other things about it that I'm really not happy about. You know, the, the lack of a track record for Repower and the fallback position of landfilling just don't sound very good to me at all. But I guess, you know, that's kind of where we are. I really, can I ask about this letter from Wheel of Rader? All right, if, if it says that they intend to submit a PPEA compliant document to the city of Virginia Beach, can that occur as we are moving forward? Or what would occur with this?
After the Use and Support Agreement is signed...
Then there's no PPEA agreement.
If you approve the Use and Support Agreement, I would recommend rejection of the unsolicited PPEA proposal.
I wish this $65 bid had been their original bid.
Yeah, we're negotiating, aren't we? John?
Well, I concur with the comments that have, have been made, but I, but I think there's another aspect to this, and I appreciate the reason why we want them to take commercial waste is so that people don't dump it other places, and that's because, in effect, SIPSA would then be a competitor with private landfills, and therefore, I mean, let's just talk to what we're really talking, so that people would find that price lower, which would press the private sector to lower their prices, which would then maybe make, no one uses SIPSA for the waste, I don't know. But we are creating a competitor, because there are private landfills in Virginia, there are private landfills that take waste at a lower price than what SIPSA was charging, that's why they went, remember the Supreme Court decision going back. So it is also clear that while we're doing this, we are creating a competitor, another source of pricing over and above the private sector. But I, I think the point that Rosemary made about us getting this tonight, and I realize the staff highlighted all the parts, you know, to tell us what had changed from last week, and I did get copies and read this in the absence, I appreciate staff getting that to me, and I, my wife probably didn't enjoy me reading it, but I did. And, but I do think there's things that's missing, and I don't, I don't see the rush that we have to, to vote for this tonight. I don't, I don't think this is, the sun doesn't rise tomorrow morning. I'm certain it will rise and will set if we do not act on this, and I think there's more homework to be done.
Other questions or comments?
I'll take the man.
Okay. John, and then...
Well, yeah, I mean, when we talked about this last Tuesday, it was, you know, really the reason we needed to vote on this today was because of the expiration of the Repower bid. And, and so the new information that I've received tonight is that that is going to have to be extended as just the normal course of business anyway, because the SIPSA board on Friday, regardless of their vote, is not going to be able to act on the document. And so absent an extension by Repower on Saturday, which I guess is when it would expire the day after, or whenever it is, SIPSA's not going to be able to act anyway. And so, you know, I'd like to know from you, Mr. Hanson, you know, what really the big win is for us, you know, jumping off the ship tonight.
Yes, sir.
Can I interject before Dave answers? You know, because, you know, like, I think I've talked to quite a few of all in the past week, all this, people have called me. And I've got to be totally upfront, I am supporting this because of the strong recommendation from the city manager and the staff. They have a good track record of dealing with, hate to say garbage, waste management. And, and they do. I mean, if you sit back and tell me that we don't have one of the strongest teams in the region, in the state, you know, doing this, you know, I think we all agree. And I do believe that we need to support the city manager in this, and that's the main reason, and the staff, that's the main reason I'm doing it. Dave, you want to elaborate why?
Yes, sir.
Please.
On the 27th of April...
Like, you teed up like that, buddy?
Yes, sir, I appreciate that. On the 27th of April, the SIPSA board met, and they made a determination that they had been working on this with us for quite some time, all the members, to such a degree that we brought it before you in October with the briefing, and had you pass the resolution in January. But, you know, at the 27th of April, they said, look, we're, we finalized the Use and Support Agreement, this is what we all agreed to, they voted 15 to 2 in support of the, of the, or 13 to 2, I guess it was, in support of the Use and Support Agreement, and they made a determination that the 13th of May will be their drop date date. If we elect not to act on this today, they, we basically say, stated that we are not going to execute the Use and Support Agreement. And they will be faced with a challenge on Friday of whether or not they want to proceed without Virginia Beach.
Well, I, I would say that that's not what we're saying. You know, I don't know why it is that the city of Virginia Beach is the only municipality that has to say that we're going to support it in advance of...
All the other municipalities, John, have approved this.
Formally. So why do they have to go back to their councils for...
Because we're...
Because of the changes we've asked for?
Yes, sir. They've, and, and so, because, and Portsmouth also voted against it, and Portsmouth is engaged in negotiation with SIPSA on a transfer station requirement that they got, or some other transaction that SIPSA's working out with them to satisfy their, their disposal, collection, and transfer station issues, because they don't have one. But we, if, if, just reverse the coin here and say, you've already approved a Use and Support Agreement, but all of a sudden Norfolk decides they need another addition, it would have to come back to us, I would have to brief you to say, look, they want to make an amendment here with regards to something that affects Virginia Beach. Commercial waste affects the other members of SIPSA. They, they may elect to retain us, and they may elect not to retain us, but at least we have offered to them that we are going to remain a regional member of the authority, and that we are going to continue to be a regional partner with them in the regional authority. But in order for us to do this, we believe it's necessary to protect our haulers, our private haulers. I mean, just from the beach alone, the concerns that we have of commercial waste not being allowed to go to the Oceana Transfer during the summer and be off the beach by midday at the latest is so critical. If we took away that Oceana Transfer Station, I can't promise you I can clear your beach during the summer of commercial waste in the timeline necessary.
Well, I mean, the, the question I have is, is obviously, you know, and I understand, you know, that we have to do it, I guess, because we're the ones that are asking for the changes. But in fairness, we asked for the changes in October. We didn't sneak up on it and say, oh, we, we forgot.
In January, with your resolution.
In January, but we were having those discussions in October, we formally acted in January, we're in May now. And so, you know, that's all I can say.
And then I'm going to call for the question.
And I respect you, Dave, in the work that you've done on this, and I understand. However, I'm with Rosemary in that just getting all of this tonight, although you did highlight it this break, it's, I need to absorb this, and then we've got this unsolicited PPEA. Is it, is that going to save us money in the long run?
That's not the PPEA, that's saying when it's coming.
Oh, okay. Well, this thing that I'm just seeing for the first time, is it going to save us money and give us, it looks like as I'm scanning this, a 30-year solution versus a nine-year solution? I just feel like we need more time to make this decision.
If you eyeball that, there's a $65 fee plus an investment in a transfer station that we would have to build, which would be a substantial investment as well. And, you know, my thing to you is, I think we need to see what SIPSA's going to do on Friday. We've got a pretty good deal price-wise with SIPSA as it stands. And if Repower works, it's really, really good. If it doesn't, we still have a fallback position at a very low price. All right, do, do we, yes, ma'am?
I think we should stay on the ground that's brought to us right now with the staff.
Very good. Well, do we have, is that a motion?
I've already made it.
Oh, you made a motion?
I made a motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Call for the question, please.
This is, by a vote of nine to two, you have adopted the resolution for SIPSA.
Very good. Thank you all. We thank you all for your attendance. I thought this one would take more time than the budget, which I was right, and we'll adjourn. Thank you very much.